The February 3rd, 2022, meeting of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Gentlemen, if I could ask you, please remove your caps while we're in the meeting. Thank you very much. If you'd stand for us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation, and Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
Come by with us.
Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this day. Thank you for this weather we've had today. Look over us as a storm comes through again. We ask that you look over our meeting tonight. Guide us and direct us. Vice, we ask that you give everyone that took the time out of their day to come visit with us a safe trip back home on the way home. All these things in Jesus' name.
Thank you, be seated. If I could remind you to please silence your cell phones during the meeting. We do have all five commissioners present tonight for 100% quorum. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting from January 20th. If there are no additions or amendments to those minutes, I'd like a motion for approval.
No move.
You'll hear a second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes passes four with one abstention. We do have a little change to the agenda tonight. If you gentlemen don't mind, I'm going to make the request for the change from the chair because it's a little complicated. We've got, we've got two conceptual plans tonight to consider that also have two variances that are attached to them. The variances are in the public hearing section of the meeting. The conceptual plans are going to be heard before those variances on the agenda as it was submitted. Let's say that we approve the conceptual plans, but we deny the variances. It's going to create a problem. So what we're going to do is we're going to move those conceptual plans to follow the particular variances they're associated with. It's kind of unusual. I can say, I've never seen anything quite like this in 15 years of being on this board. So I'd like to propose that we move item number H2C2 to follow file VA 220203, and to also move file H2C1 to follow VA 220204. Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any other amendments? Okay, all in favor? Motion to approve the amended agenda passes 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to commissioners for final action on February 15th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in these same chambers. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden, and she will provide a request to speak for them to you. We're less formal in this meeting. How many of you have been to a planning commission meeting before? Okay, so we got, we got a bunch of newbies in here. During the public hearing section of the meeting, I'll give you an opportunity. If you'd like to speak either for or against a particular item on the agenda, raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up to the microphone and take three to five minutes to give us your position for or against. You are able to use your finger to draw on that monitor if you'd like to point something out, draw a line, make an X or whatever. If you have something you'd like to address that's not on the agenda tonight, we have a public, a public comment section at the end of the meeting. So again, raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up and give us whatever information you'd like us to have or consider, or just to add to the record. These meetings are recorded, and you can go to the, I think, can you request a CD or is it all online now?
It's all online.
All online. So you can go to the Columbia County site, and you can pull up the meeting minutes and listen to those at your leisure. That being said, our first item tonight is a piece of unfinished business. It's file RZ 211203. This is a public hearing, so I'll reopen the public hearing with regards to this particular item.
Yes, sir.
And that's Ms. Montgomery?
Yep. This is a request for rezoning at 4204 Washington Road from R2 Single Family Residential to PRD Planned Residential Development. This is the location of the apartment, of the project on the west side of Washington Road. This is the existing apartment complex to the north. The proposal would expand that apartment complex onto the subject parcels. Current zoning is R2, again, the adjacent apartment complex here and Washington Commons to the south. The site is currently largely undeveloped, with just the existing house. There is quite a bit of floodplain on the property, so the site plan does avoid the majority of this. You also see there's a lot of floodplain here between the developable kind of high area of the property and Washington Road. So that, that does impact their proposed access to the site. This is the existing site from Washington Road and from Legion Drive at the back of the site. And the development plan, again, their entrance to the site does not come from Washington Road through this parcel. It does come through the existing apartment complex. And then there was a secondary access at the rear that is proposed from Legion Drive, which you can see here. Now, the outstanding issue with this project is Legion Drive. It is not a county road. It is a private easement essentially with no dedicated right-of-way. In order to develop this project as proposed, it does need to be upgraded to, to have actual right-of-way, to be a public road. And the applicants were working on that during the postponement time, but they have not been able to resolve that issue at this point. So they have requested to withdraw this request without prejudice at this time. A couple examples of the proposed development and the future land use map. It is neighborhoods, but it is adjacent to Evans Town Center and between the two higher-density developments. So in general, staff was in favor of the use, but there does remain this kind of technical issue with Legion Drive and being able to actually develop the site that is, remains to be worked out. So staff is recommending to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here tonight? Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address. And even though they've asked us to postpone, we still have a public hearing and accept whatever comments you've got to make.
Yes, sir. My name is Tim Jordan. I'm the commander of post 192 on 275 Legion Drive. Address is 223 Syracuse Court, Martinez. We don't feel that this is a great accomplishment to Legion Drive. There's a lot of traffic that's going to go on to our posts and down the Legion Drive. And speaking with, I can draw on this.
You can draw.
This property owner, the property owner right here, and we are right here. We don't feel that this is a great accomplishment for us. Feel that there's a lot more traffic going to partake in going forward down here. If you've ever been down our road, this is an absolute nightmare just to get out of. Feel that this is a bad decision on the county.
Okay.
Questions?
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Thank you for your service. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
Hi. My name is Dennis Mason. I'm the finance officer for the American Legion, post 192. This area right here, that's in question. With the, my address is 144 Ashburn Drive, Martinez, Georgia. The idea here with this road, right now, we have a lot of work that's being done to the road that we maintain. The county does come down. They do maintain some road, but we do have our landscaping company comes in and they do some maintenance on that road right there. One of the things that we are looking at, if this development does come into place, how is that going to impact the road? How is it going to impact the development of this road with the intent of, we have wires, and we have drainage, and we have other aspects going on with this particular area right here that we've already addressed. We have the water drainage. We have a pond right here, which is a big factor because we have water that drains off, and we don't want to contaminate this, this pond. We do use this for the Legion. We have fishing tournaments for the kids. We do have it for the, the public that they can come in. We do have DNR. They do stock that pond with the advantage, with the advent of more public, more public being accessing to this area here. We're concerned with the fact that this area will no longer be a secure area, that we would have more people in the area. We would have to improve the, the security. Our insurance would have to be involved to make sure that people are not getting into the property. This, this, this pond, it's a three-acre pond. It is the part of the American Legion pond. Right now, we don't have a fence around it, and we, we, we're going to have to probably do something to improve this as well. And again, this is all if the road access comes through. We have more people walking around, more people in the act. Right now, we have a nice secluded area because the area, this whole area right here is all owned by the American Legion. This road that comes down, curves, goes down alongside the pond, and this area, that's all right in this area right here, is all owned by the American Legion. So introducing more passage, more public awareness of what's going on in that area, we would have to have more insurance. We would have more security possibility.
Is that, is that the truth? Something like this goes in, they're going to have to improve. I mean, you're in the insurance business, so.
It's a factor for insurance.
Anytime that you have more people who are not actual members of the Legion, our insurance is impacted by it because one of the questions that they do ask us-
If they're not on your property, you can, they can get arrested for trespassing. I mean, this, this guy owns an insurance agency, so I'm, I think he's the subject matter expert on it.
And that's fine. I'm the finance officer. I've put the insurance, and I do know the questions that they do ask. But one of the questions that they do ask is about the pond. Who has access to the pond? By having more individuals accessing the area, we would have more people-
They don't have access to your property. I don't, I don't understand your argument.
We don't have, we don't have a fence on a property. We don't have any way of keeping people off the property. We do have people that come from outside that come into the area, and they do fish in the pond because they know we stocked the pond. Now, the question is, how is that going to impact us on the Legion, our insurance? I know right off the bat, our insurance is going to want to know, how are we protecting our property? We have no fences.
They would want to know that.
I'm going to have to call Tom on you too, sir, because you've gone over your five minutes.
I'm, I'm, I'm very sorry.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against a particular variance? Yes, sir. Is there anybody else that wants to talk about something besides traffic and access? Because if we're going to get repetitive, I'm going to ask you to be seated.
The Ann Carrier, 204 Full Circle Drive, member in the American Legion. Have your people looked at DOT, at the impact that would cause? Because right across the street, you've got the strip mall. Where are you going to put a red light for these people to get in and out? Because it's going to be suicide there. Because it's almost a blind turn-in.
That's a conversation for the, the traffic department. And again, these folks are not going forward. They're asking to postpone this and may not even bring it back. They're actually to withdraw without prejudice.
Just so we know that all they-
Had this conversation two different times. We've been asked that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir. I saw someone in the back. Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and accept a motion to either approve the project, to disapprove the project, or to allow the, the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
Chairman, I make a motion to allow file RZ 211203 to withdraw without prejudice.
Go hear a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to withdraw without prejudice passes 5-0. All right. Mr. Butler, we've got a massage operator's license tonight.
We do. This is for Chloe Helen Roy, DBA Helen's Helping Hands at 490 Washington Road for on-premise only massage. Meets all the requirements of the ordinance. Staff recommends approval of her massage operator.
Gentlemen, if I could ask you to please keep down your comments until you get out of the room.
Do you want me to go through it again? Or did you hear it?
No, that's weak.
Okay. Again, it's Chloe Helen Roy, DBA Helen's Helping Hands at 490 Washington Road for on-premise only massage. She meets all requirements of the ordinance. Staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, any questions? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Chloe Helen Roy, DBA Helen's Helping Hands at 4090 Washington Road.
Go hear a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 4-0. All right, we'll skip over the first two items. Ms. Montgomery, I guess we move to H2C3?
Yes, sir.
Conceptual plan for Knollwood?
Yes, sir. This is a revision to a previously approved conceptual plan off Washington Road and Clanton Road. It is part of the Riverwood West Planned Unit Development. This is the location of the property off Washington Road and Clanton Road, Windmill Plantation adjacent. And this was the previously approved concept, and this was approved back in May of 2021. It was approved with modifications, some from staff, including relocation of the fire access road on Clanton Road, improvement of Clanton Road, the 50-foot buffer from the edge of Clanton Road, revision of the alley, and a revised development name. And then there were additional modifications added with the planning commission approval, which involved including the roundabout on Clanton Road and paving of Clanton Road to the entrance and providing dust control for the unpaved portion of Clanton Road. What we have before us tonight is a modified concept, and this was the original modification submitted for this meeting. Relocated the entrance further down to meet fire code requirements. We do have a revised development name. This is now Knollwood as opposed to the Woodlands as it was previously. Dust control proposed on the unpaved portion of Clanton Road. And the original proposal for this revised concept included paving of Clanton Road in its existing location. Now, that is not within the right-of-way, and it does not meet the geometric requirements as far as like curve radius and things like that for a, a public road once it's paved. So there, there were some concerns with that proposal, and basically, the county staff got together and proposed a modification that would address this. So realigning Clanton Road for a portion to be within the right-of-way that straightens it out. It takes out some of those sharp curves and removes those concerns. And by shortening up that, that distance, so moving the entrance from this location further down, that did kind of help, help with the cost of that to realign and pave the road. The remainder of Clanton Road that's unpaved would still have the, the dust control on it. So this is the revised concept accounting for those county staff comments. So what planning commission is being asked to approve tonight is this revised entrance plan and to remove the requested modification for the roundabout on Clanton Road in light of these kind of negotiations that have happened in the interim. And staff is recommending approval with those modifications.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with modifications the conceptual plan for Woodlands at Riverwood.
Go hear a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, conceptual plan for Southwind Village Phase 4.
Yes, sir. This is a conceptual plan for the final phase of Southwind Village off Hereford Farm Road. This is phase four of the development. It is already zoned R2 Single Family Residential, and the proposal is for 88 single-family lots. This is the location of the property on the north side of the existing phases of Southwind. So this was phases one and two. And this is the location of phase three that's currently under construction. And then phase four will be up on this northern piece. As far as existing conditions, this is a slope analysis done by our GIS department to kind of help visualize the geography on the site. There is Uchi Creek and floodplain in this area, and the remainder of the site is actually fairly gently sloped. You can see some steeper slopes in this area in the, the darker color and a little bit on, on this property line. And the conceptual plan is again for 88 single-family lots. It is an extension of an existing road from Southwind Village Phase 2 into a loop road, so no cul-de-sacs to worry about on, on this section as far as cul-de-sac length or anything along those lines. The 50-foot buffer is shown on most of the sides of the property. They do need to be a little careful on this side. They are going to have to have the 50-foot buffer there, and it's not shown clearly on this concept. That is a comment from staff that they do need to include that on that side. And staff is recommending approval, subject to the interdepartmental comments.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Southwind.
Go hear a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, we've got an individual plat for Charles Alex Griffin.
We do. This is an individual plat at 6596 Ridge Road for one new lot, a five-acre lot. Currently zoned R, agricultural. Shows the location of the property on Ridge Road. And again, it's the 2018 plat. So one of the things with county code, if you use the minor plat process, is then you go through our, our, through Kevin Fort. He basically stamps it in the way it goes if you have less than four lots. If you come back and, and want to get another lot out of that, you have to, there's a five-year moratorium unless you come through a planning commission. So what we're looking at tonight is a waiving of that five-year moratorium on a piece proper, on a subdivision land of, it's basically this old lot here, a little smaller than that one, essentially where it is. This shows the posed plat, again, five acres, is being cut out of that existing parcel. Staff recommends approval of the waiving of the five-year moratorium. In this situation, it is for a family member, fairly typical for something like this. They are also meeting their covenants, which are, we're not willing to enforce, but again, it's one of those things that we do look at on occasion. Staff recommends approval of the plat.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve individual plat for Charles Alex Griffin at 6596 Ridge Road.
Go hear a second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, final plat for Whispering Pines 5 Alpha.
Yes, sir. This is the final plat for the next phase of Whispering Pines located off William View Parkway, currently zoned Planned Unit Development. This is the location of this section, and this is the, the section 5A that we're looking at. And this section includes 77 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 7,514 square feet and an average lot size of 8,938 square feet. Setbacks are a minimum of 25 feet from the right-of-way, seven and a half feet from the side property lines, and 10 feet from the rear property lines, which meets the requirements of the PUD. Sidewalks are to be provided on both sides of the road, and 13.1 acres of open space is provided in this section. This is the existing site, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Whispering Pines, section 5A off of William.
Go hear a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Prove carries 5-0. All right, we'll open up our public hearings for tonight. Mr. Butler, first is file RZ 220201, R1 to P1.
Yep. Name and address, this is a request for rezoning off Gateway Boulevard from R1 to P1 for a proposed medical clinic. This is the location of the property on the south side of Gateway Boulevard. And again, currently zoned R1 across the street. You do have the S1 that is for the future hospital. And the next door, you have another S1 to the east there, which is for a church. South is more R1. And then to the north across Gateway Boulevard, kind of the northwest, we have some C2. This is a real view of the property and the existing site. And the plat of the property, again, highlighted in yellow there, is a piece proper we're looking at tonight. And the overall concept plan, again, as a concept, we're not locking them into their design here, but again, does show the proposed medical clinic. It's three stories, about 25,000 square feet total. You do see the parking lot, the dumpster pad. They do have a shared drive here with the church next door, and then a ride-in, ride-out here as well. We'll talk about the variance here in a moment, which is in regards to this little piece here. But again, kind of gives you an idea of, of what they will, will be developing there. Overall, from a, a planning standpoint, this is within the mixed-use activity center, the Gateway Activity Center. This type of use is, should be out there. It's one that definitely fits within that. Again, if it's a commercial, professional, could have apartments, that sort of thing out there. So in terms of Vision 2035, it does fit quite well. We do have two conditions on the, on the rezoning. One of those is by the health department. It's more of a clarification. It does say that they must connect sewer. Then also from planning, we do have a condition in regards to the building elevations. We don't have any building elevations with the application at this, at this point. We did have a condition on the C2 that we saw earlier that spoke to the different types of materials. So we're kind of trying to keep it, you know, somewhat consistent across that, that whole corridor there. So we do have building elevations that's to be approved by planning commission. Do have a list of materials there, including brickstone, stucco, cement, just fiberglass, or a combination thereof, with metal used as a roofing or accent material. And then you guys have the ability to approve alternate materials. So again, staff records approval with conditions of the request.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to come up and add? All right. Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 220201, zoning from R1 to P1 for tax map, 068 parcel 960 located off Gateway Boulevard.
Go hear a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, we've got the companion variance, file VA 220202.
Well, we do. This is a request for variance, section 98139, buffers and screens to eliminate the fence from the structural buffer requirement. Again, the property off Gateway Boulevard on the south side. To be fairly familiar with it at this point, currently zoned R1. We have S1 to the east and north, and then R1 to the south and west. Again, a real view of the property and the existing site and the plat and the concept plan. So the request this evening, you can kind, it's not really that easily visible on, on the, the presentation here, but you do have a buffer that goes here, then moves down to a 20-foot structural, and goes back out to a 30. You know, typically with, with our zoning, you have a, a 30-foot structural buffer is kind of the norm. P1's a little different than commercial. You do have the ability to do a 30-foot natural or 20-foot structural. So in this situation, they have primarily a 30-foot natural on the, the R1 piece there to the south. Again, owned by Columbia County. We'll kind of get into that here in a minute. But they do have a section here that they had to reduce down to 20 feet to be able to fit their, their drive aisle into it. What they're looking to do is in that 20-foot structural buffer to eliminate the structural component of it. They're still going to plant it and all that sort of stuff. So it'll look, it'll look normal, or look like a natural buffer is minus the structural part. In our, in our, our opinion of it, the county is, the county's property is to the south. We're not going to develop that. You do have, if you go to the next slide, I believe, oh, nope, I didn't put it in there. Go back to this one. So on this one, you do have lots of floodplain here, and then also you have a creek that runs through this area here. Again, not going to develop up against that. Rides a pretty good buffer. So again, waiving of it for this small area, not a big deal in our opinion. Staff does have a condition with it. Again, just kind of make sure we're all clear what's going to happen there. Structural component is not required for any buffer adjacent to tax map, 068539C. That's again, the property owned by the county. Any parful, any buffer adjacent to this parcel shall be planted or utilized as needed as required by section 98139. That includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? I see the applicant left, so is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close. Yes, sir. Please come forward. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA 220202 variance to remove the structural element of the buffer for tax map, 068 parcel 960 off Gateway Boulevard.
Go hear a second. Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Mystery, file VA 220201, variance to section 90-98.
Yes, sir. This is a variance application for 475 Columbia Industrial Boulevard on 8.84 acres, and the current zoning is M2 General Industrial, and the existing use is for lumber storage and sales. And it's variance for 90-98, list of lot and structure requirements for the front building setback. Here is the location of Columbia Industrial Boulevard. And here is the zoning map. It is M2, and the majority of the property and the surrounding property was M2 since 1973. And then since the 1980s, several properties were rezoned from M1, S1 for church and cell tower, some C3, and then the PUD, which is Evans Trade Center. This is the area of the property and a plat. And a plat. And this is a plat also showing the strip along this edge here, which is actually the, owned by the Georgia Power Company. And this is just a mapping error that GIS is going to fix in the next update. Here is the photographs of the existing site, you can see the existing storage buildings. And the pond and the parking lot. The concept plan with this shows where the existing buildings are, and the new building is on the south side right here. And there is a retention pond along here, which is along the road frontage, and that is what's actually in the way of meeting the front building setback. The previous structure is a steel frame building, and it's for the storage of lumber. This, this illustrates the setback requirement, so the blue line across here is the 90 foot maximum setback for the Evans Town Center requirements. Because of the retention pond, this building here cannot meet that, so it's justification for the location of that, and then for the variance. The side setback for zoning is three feet along this part, which is where the existing fence is. And just, just as the background, the structures were actually built in 1985, and Evans Town Center was adopted in 2000. This is the aerial that shows where the, the building is going to be, and then we do have a condition on this about the landscape, there will be a landscape strip located along that as part of the construction plans for this, this is approved. So the staff recommends approval with the following condition, that the landscape strips are required along the front of the property and the detention pond, approximately 200 feet in length and designed in collaboration with the county landscape architect.
Gentlemen, any questions staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, is there anything you'd like to come forward and add? All right. Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA two two one variance to maximum front setback, four seventy five Columbia Boulevard.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Who carries five zero? And I'd like to thank you guys for the support you give scouts on the Eagle Projects. I know several that have, have come, and y'all have been, been more than gracious and helped them out. All right, this is where we get a bit wonky in our meeting, we've got file VA two two zero two zero three in the public hearing, then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll hear the conceptual plan, file H two C two, and we'll do those individually. Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, we'd like to keep you all on your toes. This first item is the variance request for a property off Crestwood Parkway, it is a variance to section thirty four dash one regarding major site grading. This is the location of the property off Hereford Farm Road, Columbia Road down here to the south, this is Bartram Trail to the west, Southwind Village and Four Oaks are the existing surrounding subdivisions. The property is currently zoned R two, it is single family residential, it's been zoned that way since 2012. Prior to that, it was actually part of the Bartram Trail PUD, in 2012, it was pulled out as a separate R two. The subdivisions to the north and south, so Four Oaks and Southwind Village had, are both R two RCO, so they had separate RCO zonings approved, and separate concept plans approved with those RCO zonings, that was done in 2013 and 2014 respectively. So they are developing those properties under those older approved concept plans. This is the aerial of the site, you can see Four Oaks pretty much finished out there, Southwind Village sure does not look like that, that phase is under construction currently, and this particular property is undeveloped. This is the existing site. And the concept plan, now, is in 2016, the county revised our major site grading requirements to require a 50 foot buffer around the perimeter of sites that were subject to major site grading. This site is intended to be major group, mass graded, so it would be subject to that 50 foot buffer requirement, and that does exist on this side of the property. Where they are asking for the variance is on the east side, where you can see it marked in red. They are requesting a variance to reduce that buffer down to 15 feet in line with the approvals for Southwind Village and Four Oaks, which again, we're developing under older approved concept plans. They're basically being constructed under an older version of the county code. And since this phase will tie in both to Southwind Village and Four Oaks road locations, they are kind of stuck with where those roads have been constructed or are being constructed. And they're required to connect to those to meet fire code, so they do have to tie into both of those roads in order to develop this section. So they are asking to reduce the buffer down to 15 feet in line with what's been done in those previous sections of the same development, to make that, that connection a little smoother. There was a note provided that they would do either utilizing existing vegetation or adding a structural element to that buffer. We did discuss with the applicant that the or was not an acceptable alternative, and we do have a proposed condition that basically makes that an and. The buffer shall include both natural vegetation and a structural element such as a privacy fence or wall with a minimum of six feet in height and presenting a finished appearance to the neighboring properties. And, and further defining how that vegetation is to be handled, so remaining undisturbed except for any supplemental plannings, that's very typical for buffers in residential. That they leave the existing vegetation as much as possible and then add to it as needed, and that is all to be coordinated during review of the preliminary plat. And then insta, installed prior to approval of the final plat, so that that fence and all of that buffer goes in before the houses start construction. And staff is recommending approval with that condition.
Gentlemen, any questions staff?
By reducing that buffer, how do you think it affects joint and property owner?
Obviously, they're going to be able to see more than they would with a wider buffer. I mean, the hope is that the fence helps balance that out.
Any other questions? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? All right, thank, okay, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
My name is Carol Bukey, I live at five three eight one Hereford Farm Road.
Would you spell your last name for me?
B U K I. My husband and I bought this piece of property, it's eight acres, 38 years ago and built a home there. I just found out actually today what this is going to involve, and I'm a little, this is really bothering me here. I have some issues, I know you were going over some of the buffers and so forth, I understand that it's been a 50 foot buffer previous to this require, this issue now, and then they're, they're trying to drop it to 15 feet, is that correct in what I was trying to assess from what you were saying?
Correct, so under current county codes, we would require a 50 foot buffer. That was not the case for the, the older sections of the subdivision that have been built, so they are requesting the 15 foot in line with how the older codes functioned.
Well, from my understanding, I, from, from, I have some neighbors here too, I have, I have approximately probably about 200 acres across that piece of property, it's at five three eight one. Let me see where I am here, can somebody help me?
Right there, I believe.
This is my property right here. So it's been peaceful and quiet there, and I realize that with this development in this, all of this Columbia County, that there's going to be houses eventually. Mike and, Mike and, and it's just about three of us that's going to be affected here, me, my neighbor, and another neighbor that has 25 acres there, of this 17 acres just behind my house. We're con, we're concerned about the noise, the congestion, you can, you know, the noise, the grass cutting, pets, kids, the vandalism, security, I have enough problems now, there used to be an old logging road behind my house, and from the Four Oaks subdivision, there's actual people coming down, the, what used to be a logging road, walking, four wheeling, I've had some vandalism, people coming onto my property from the back. And that was what they call the old logging road, and I think Mr. Dipsy probably realizes that from back in the day behind Mr. Kirkland's house on Hereford Farm Road, he knows of what I speak. Part of the logging road is still there, I rode back into the area just Sunday to see exactly where they were going to try to continue on with the development. There is, as you see here, Crestwood Drive, a little further down, there's a lot of gaps where they, from the homes on Hereford Farm Road, there's this area here, I do believe that's what I'm looking at. It's a deeper, a far distance from the homes to the actual road there. Behind me, it's pretty much a level plan from this area here. So I'm, I'm protesting the fact that this is going to be only a 15 foot buffer. I really think that this is doing a disservice to my property values, to my neighbor's property values here, and to my neighbors who lives over here, who she's not here today. I really believe that you guys should keep it at a 50 foot buffer, and if you are going to have it at a 15 foot buffer, I need to know exactly what you're going to put behind me, because I really am concerned about all the group of people that's going to be right behind my house. There's going to be kids, people riding bikes, four wheeling in that area behind me. So I would really ask that you guys reconsider the 50 foot variance versus a 15 foot variance.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. All right, thank you very much. Would you give us your name and, and home address just for the record? Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing, is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove VA twenty two dash O two dash O three.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of disapproval, raise your right hand. All to approve, raise your right hand, okay, the motion fails four one. All right, we'll close the public hearing and go to file H two C two, the conceptual plan for Southwind Village. Or not Southwind Village, but, you know what I mean.
Yeah. I mean, it connects to both, so, but they are, they are considering this part of Four Oaks, so we'll, we'll stick with that naming. And this is the associated concept plan for the same parcel, it is intended to be phase four of Four Oaks, it is 44 lots on 17.6 acres. And this is the location of the property off the west side of Hereford Farm Road at the end of Crestwood Parkway in the Four Oaks subdivision. And we did have some fun topographic analysis done by our engineering department, so this is their version of the, the topographic analysis, kind of shows the existing slopes on the site. For reference, everything in red is basically over 15% slope, green is basically flat, less than 5%, and the gradations in between with the, the yellow and the orange. And there is some floodplain present on the property, this is the high point, the property kind of slopes this way, and then obviously both directions away from that ridge as well. Again, this is the concept plan, which we saw just a moment ago, this subproperty is zoned R two, so these lots are a minimum of 10,000 square feet, and are to be accessed via that extension from Crestwood Parkway, and then from Southwind Village, phase three. That does give both of those developments second access for fire code as required, which neither of the developments currently has, so that does help with the, the fire code issues and kind of the life safety side of things. The remainder of the road network is the simple root load, root loop road with one relatively short cul-de-sac. The project is intended to be mass graded, and as we just saw, they are requesting a variance to the, the buffer for that. Water and sewer service are required to be provided to the lots, sewer service is intended to be provided from an existing gravity main on the west side of the property, and water service would be extended from Four Oaks. Staff is recommending approval of the concept plan, subject to the interdepartmental comments and contingent on approval of the variance request by the Board of Commissioners.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Does approval of the variance mean?
I would assume there's no way to really approve the concept plan because it's going to have to change. Would that be accurate?
That's so.
That would be, that would likely be the case, I mean, again, assuming that the Board of Commissioners also votes to turn down the variance request, but yeah, I mean, under that premise, then they would have to modify it in some respects. That's going to impact the layout, probably would be beneficial to come back through for concept approval.
But we got to vote them separately.
Absolutely.
Correct.
So which one we vote them first?
So, so this, this one would be, you would either vote to approve, this, and this is not a public hearing, to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone the get back, it would be H two C two. Which is the conceptual plan for Four Oaks, phase four.
And if it's voted and approved, and then the variance, it voted and disapproved.
We've already, we've already disapproved the variance.
So if the, if the Board of Commissioners does the, the same thing, they will have to come back through for a concept most likely regardless, because the, the concept plan will change enough to require that.
I'll, I'll make a motion from the chair to disapprove the conceptual plan for Four Oaks, phase four file, it's item number H two C two. Just because this is a little complicated. Can I have a second? Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor to disapprove conceptual plan for Four Oaks, phase four? Motion disapproved passes five zero. All right, so we'll, agenda back open here, we'll reopen the public hearing, Ms. Montgomery, for file VA two two zero two zero four.
Yes, sir, so this is a variance request to the same section regarding major site grading for a property off Bronco Pass, also currently zoned R two, single family residential. This is the location of this property at the back of Four Oaks, so this is the main entrance to Four Oaks here, and then this property is accessed via Bronco Pass. Again, the property is currently zoned R two, under that same 2012 zoning file. And this is the aerial of the site, it is currently undeveloped. You will notice there is this narrow strip, that wasn't a good arrow, but there is a narrow strip of property here that is owned by the Bartram Trail HOA, so that is not part of this property, that is a buffer that is owned and maintained by the Bartram Trail HOA, and it is part of the applicant's argument for this variance request. This is the existing site. And the concept plan, so we'll see the area for that reduced buffer request is on the north side of this property. Again, this property is intended to be mass graded, so it is subject to the 50 foot buffer requirement, which they have shown on three sides of the property. On this north side, obviously, they have the area here where the connection to the existing road is essentially 50 feet wide, there's space for the road, but not for buffer in that space. So they do have a, a site constraint there, just with the, the dimensions of the property. And then along the remainder of the northern property line, they have requested that the buffer be reduced from 50 feet down to 20 feet. The argument for this is twofold, that first of all, that the HOA maintains the 30 foot buffer on the other side of this property line, so with those two buffers together, the one maintained by the HOA and the 20 feet, they would provide the 50 foot buffer is met, and that meets the intent of the code. And secondly, that there is quite a bit of topography on this property, and in order to have enough space for grading to create usable backyard space, they could really use that additional 30 feet per their narrative. And now typically, the county would not allow vegetation on an adjacent property to count toward a buffer, and we do typically require that that be provided on the subject property. This is a bit of a special case in that, that adjacent property is literally a buffer. It is maintained by the HOA for that purpose, and it was part of the conditions of the R two rezoning for this property, that that strip be maintained as a 30 foot buffer. So in this case, it does kind of help provide that buffer that is the intent of the code. I know there were some concerns about the, the distance to the golf course, so we did put in some additional slides to show some measurements. This is the cart path on the property, so this is the measurement from the edge of the cart path to the property line, across the buffer, and then the 10 foot required setback from the edge of the buffer. So this is the basically minimum distance for any structure from the edge of the cart path to the lots on these, on this property. So they're at about 128 feet by the time they get from the cart path across the two buffers and then the required setback. For comparison, some of the other golf course area development For comparison, some of the other golf course area developments in Bartram Trail, they actually do have a portion of the cart path that crosses onto one of the lots based on the aerial. And even where it's a little further over, over here, they're about 30 feet from the edge of the cart path to the back of any structures there with the required setbacks. Earlier phases of Four Oaks over here, again, much closer, they're looking at about 66, 67 feet from the edge of the cart path to the back of the structure, to basically the rear setback line. Now that being said, if you look at how most houses are developed in subdivisions, typically, they are pulled closer to the front of the property. But in theory, they could be built as far back as that 10-foot setback. In consideration of kind of the existing conditions on the site, obviously, the road connection has a very narrow point of access. And then the fact that there is an additional buffer that is intended and required to remain in perpetuity and that the Bartram Trail HOA has no concerns with this request. Staff is recommending approval with the condition that the buffer is reduced to zero feet along the new road for the Bronco Pass extension, only for that portion of the property line where I showed earlier. And then the majority of the property line, the remainder of it, is reduced to 20 feet with that buffer consisting of existing implanted vegetation that creates the attractive landscape screen as required in the buffer code. And that that be coordinated with our landscape architect and approved with the preliminary plat submittal. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay. Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Anything you'd like to add? All right. All right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion on VA 22-02, excuse me, -04 to be disapproved.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor to disapprove, raise your right hand. Motion to approve? Okay. Motion fails 3-2. Then we will close the public hearing and we'll hear the conceptual plan for Four Oaks, Phase 3.
Yes, sir. This is the conceptual plan for the same parcel we just looked at off Hereford Farm Road. Again, zoned R2. And the plan for Phase 3 of Four Oaks is 22 lots on the 13.4 acres. This is the location of the site, again, at the end of Bronco Pass. And again, our topographic analysis courtesy of our engineering department. Again, the red being the steeper slopes generally over 15%. The green being the flatter areas. You can see as you get to the end of the property, in particular, there is quite a bit of grade to be dealt with. There is the existing creek and floodplain off the west side of the property. And the concept plan again is 22 single-family lots. This is R2, so the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. This does have a cul-de-sac length overall that appears to be probably larger than, longer than 700 feet. That does require specific approval from the planning commission per the subdivision code. Given the shape of the parcel, it is very narrow. And with the existing floodplain and other issues, there's really nowhere for this road to go other than a cul-de-sac. So staff has no concerns with the length of this particular cul-de-sac. Again, the project is intended to be masqueraded and is subject to the 50-foot buffer requirement. They did request the variance for that, which is being reviewed separately. Water and sewer service are required for these lots. Sewer service is intended to come from an existing gravity main on the west side of the property. And water service will be extended from Four Oaks. And staff is recommending approval, subject to the interdepartmental comments and contingent on approval of the variance by the Board of Commissioners.
All right. This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to deny, or to postpone. And I think we're in the same situation we were last motion, or with the last variance. I'll make a motion from the chair to disapprove the conceptual plan for Four Oaks, Phase 3. Can I hear a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of the disapproval? All for approval? Motion fails 3-2, or the motion passes 3-2 to disapprove. Let's see. We have no text minutes, no legal matters. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? Okay. Do we have any public comments? Yes, ma'am. Please, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
I'm Carol Bukey. I live at 5381 Hereford Farm Road on 8 acres. The backing of this property that you were just discussing, the variances. The question I have is, as I understand it tonight, the variances of 50-foot versus 15-foot had been disapproved. So the builder may come back, or the developer may come back and request a check.
Actually, our recommendation goes to the Board of Commissioners. And they have the final binding decision. So they may ignore what we've recommended to them, and they may approve the reduced buffer.
Or how would I know?
Or they may, or may they support. And that's when the developer would have to go back to the drawing board, meet with staff, and come back with a different design.
Correct. How would I though, as a taxpayer and the person who's living there, how would I find out exactly what decision was made?
It could come to the commission meeting, or you could look at the, you could call staff. You could look at the results of the, of the, of the meeting online. You could call your commissioner.
Okay. What date would that be? Do you have any?
We read it at the beginning of the meeting.
February?
February 15th.
15th. Okay. I should be at that meeting. Okay.
Same time and same location.
Okay. Yeah. Because this is really going to be, going to be best for us. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to add a public comment to the record? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
My name is Faith Haroun Gibbs. Probably need the spelling if you're writing it.
Please do.
H-A-R-R-O-U-N is in November, hyphen G-I-B-B-S. Era.
How about the first name?
Faith. I reside at 937 Innisbrook Drive. And I just wanted to know if, are we, if, are we allowed to make comments on any of the conceptual plans?
Absolutely. I mean, this is, this is where you can comment on anything that was on the agenda or anything on your mind that has to do with the county.
Sure. I do have concerns with the Southland Village Phase 4 plan. Right now, we have over 100 residents in Phases 1 and 2. And they're building Phase 3 right now. That's 105 residents. Phase 4 adds 88 more homes. We have one street into and out of this neighborhood off of Hereford Farm Road. So I don't know if a traffic study has been accomplished. I don't know if the, the structure, the pavement has been considered. If the original plan was to only have 100 and some homes, and now we're going to have 300. I reside on the main road, Innisbrook. That is the entry and exit to the neighborhood.
Okay.
So I am concerned with the quality of the road, especially when you're adding 200 more homes. And now that Phases 3 and 4 of Four Oaks have been denied temporarily, right? We don't know what the commission will do. That eliminates a potential second road into and out of the neighborhood. That is concerning for me as far as safety, fire department, police department, ability to get into and out of a call if needed. So I wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to add a public comment tonight? Ma'am, you've already been up here twice. I'm going to, I'm going to, no, ma'am. I'm sorry. I'm going to call on this young lady over here.
My name is Heather Karamath. And Karamath is K-A-R-A-M-A-T-H. I live at 706 Isleworth Drive in Southland Village. So it's also regarding the Phase 4 conceptual plan. We live, we basically have a wall dropping off about 20 feet behind our house. And I'm just wondering, I don't know how close Phase 4 is going to come to be behind us, but the, one of my neighbors who couldn't be here tonight said that she's had some Columbia County engineer and code enforcement individuals come out. And our wall is, they said it's actually an earthen berm, not a retaining wall. So I just don't know with, how, depending on how close the building of the new phase is going to come, if, because they never put in a permanent structure, if that's going to affect.
Mr. Scarborough, do you have any information that you'd like to add to this conversation? Okay. And Paul Scarborough is our engineering services director. So his folks would be the ones that had been out there on your property is the reason I ask him.
Okay. Okay.
And that's who you'll need to be in contact with if you have any questions. And I'm sure he'll be glad to give you his business card.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming out.
Building services, not engineering services.
Ah, okay. I'm sorry.
Paul would like you to know that.
I stand corrected. It's, it's, it's been a long day.
I understand.
Are there any other public comments that anybody would like to add? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to, yes, ma'am. Is this, are we covering the same ground?
Southland Village.
I want to, on top of there.
All right. Give us your name and home address.
My name's Heaven Linger.
Okay.
L-I-N-G-E-R. My address, 714 Isleworth Drive, going off of the Southland, to go on what Faith and Heather has said. My house is like right back there. So we same concern about the structure and potentially having issues with the construction of these new houses, causing issues with our property. I don't know if anything is going to, like with all the, the equipment, if something's going to cause something to happen with that wall and our property. And then additional traffic and all those lovely concerns.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. That being said, is there anyone else that would like to add anything to the public comment section? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to adjourn passes 5-0. It's 7:02. Next meeting is?
17th.
What day?
17th.
17th. February 17th, 6:00 PM in these chambers. Thanks for coming out.